Roll call.
Mrs. Bosco, Mr. Buckman, Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mrs. Griggle, Ms. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Moretti.
She's here.
Mr. Puskas, Mrs. Rinaldi.
Here.
Mr. Pollak.
Here.
Five present.
At this time, we're going to go through the interview process to replace a new, replace a board member. Dr. Graysek will help initiate this process.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. And before we get started, Mr. May, Mrs. Griggle said that she's unable to access the meeting. If you could either resend the link or let her in. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. As you know, we have an open seat on our Board of Directors, and we appreciate your interest in becoming a next board member for the Allegheny Valley School District. How this evening will work is each one of you will have two to three minutes to talk about why you believe you'd be an effective board member for the Allegheny Valley School District. After you speak, the Board of Directors and myself will have questions for each of you. Take as much time as you need to answer and answer as fully as you possibly can. Once you've spoken, that's your chance to speak and answer questions. We will then move on to the next candidate. In order to be considered, we will use tonight's information to vote next week. So you would have to also be here next week, at which time there will be nominations for the next board member, and the board will vote. So today is about the interview, about sharing with us your background, why you believe you'd be an effective board member. Next week is about getting nominated and then voted into that seat. So I did have one request. I was going to go in alphabetical order. Ms. Sarno works at the polling booth, and she needs to calculate and tabulate votes. She did ask if she could go first. I had no problem with allowing her to do so. So our first candidate that we have for consideration in the open seat is Amy Ada Sarna. Amy, would you please tell us why you believe you would be an effective school board member in the Allegheny Valley School?
I do have copies of my letter and resume. Does anyone need that, or did you all already receive that?
It's easy to read it.
Do you guys want to share?
Yeah, we can share.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Amy Sarno, 523 Chestnut Street, Springdale. I am a lifelong resident of Springdale. I'm 39 years old. I'm a 2001 graduate of Springdale High School. My son, Maxim, is currently enrolled in kindergarten here at Acmathonia, and he did do the Acmathonia pre-K program, for which we were really grateful for last year. This is my 18th year teaching at Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School. It is a public statewide cyber charter school. I worked there. I started there in the Student Services Department. I then taught middle school and high school English for many years. Over the last few years, I did create and develop the curriculum for now oversee a program for middle school students who are overage, meaning that they have been retained one or more times. And so it is like a credit recovery program for them to make up lost time in middle school, to hopefully retain them in the hopes of graduating. So while I am employed at a cyber charter, I am obviously a huge proponent and supporter of our public school system, while I believe that there are reasons why families choose online programs. It is my intent, as long as I am here in this district, whether I am here as a board member or just a PTA parent, not just a PTA parent, but a PTA parent, that it would really be my goal to retain as many families in our district as possible. I believe it's absolutely, this district is the best thing about our communities and continue to be one of the best things about our community. So that would be my goal, just to keep helping it improve. I've just been a PTA parent for a very, very short time since my son started kindergarten. But in that time, I have started a dialogue with community members about our playground facilities here at the school. We have opened up a dialogue with Principal Heffner and Mrs. Vecchio about that. And that's just an example of how I believe in leadership through collaboration. I believe very strongly in involving all stakeholders, all community members, our students, and our parents in making these kinds of initiatives and improvements to our districts. Many gems. So that's pretty much it. I am truly a public servant. As Dr. Graysek pointed out, I am a poll worker, and I do need to get back by 8:00 PM tonight to close the polls out. I've also been very involved for the last five years with the Be Smart for Kids Public Health Campaign. It is a national campaign that focuses on secure firearm storage and reducing childhood deaths and injuries by firearm. Actually, if you go to the Plum Borough School District website, you can look up, I did a presentation there last week that they livestreamed, and that's there. That leadership role, I would have to step down from if I were to be placed on the board, as would my position as poll worker. I'd have to step down as well. And I would be ready to move into this next phase.
Great. Thank you, Sarno. If you'd like to remain standing, you can. We do have some board members that have a little difficulty hearing, so we want you to be as comfortable as possible. We prefer you're closer to me.
I'm totally fine. Yeah.
Just so everyone's aware, the board members that are joining virtually, one has lost her voice, so I'm not playing on my phone. She's texting me questions that she wants me to ask of all of you. So I don't want anyone to think I'm being rude or disinterested in what you're sharing. Before I get into the questions that I was sent, let's open this up to the Board of Directors for any questions that they have for Ms. Sarno.
Mr. Nali?
Thank you for your interest in the board. I'm sure you're aware, we meet publicly two meetings a month. There are weeks that we meet three or four times consecutively. Will you be available and have time to do that if sometimes it's three times, three times, three times, three weeks consecutively, four nights a week? Will you be able to commit that time?
Absolutely. As long as it's in the evening. My work day does typically end between 3:00 and 3:30 every day. So as long as it was after that time, if I had enough notice and it was during the day, I could arrange that. But as long as it is during the evening, typically, or weekends would be, yeah, since I would be stepping down for my other volunteer opportunities to do this, yes, I would be available.
I have one question. A lot of times, I know myself, one of the reasons I joined, went on, ran for the board was I had an issue with the full-day kindergarten. Is there an issue that you have with this school district that makes, draws you to trying to be on the board, or you just?
No. No, I don't have a particular issue. Like I said, I am very interested in the development of a playground and the development of our outdoor spaces at both places. I do think I can, you know, work on those and work with the school, even if I'm not on the school board doing those things. No, there's no issue that I have or problem other than this is just feels like a natural next phase of my life. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because we are a public school, we have to work with revenues that we have at hand. All right. What is your opinion on realistic budgets?
Opinion on realistic budgets?
Yes, with the revenues at hand.
So I would have to say, you know, if you were going to ask what would be my weakness or the thing that I would need to strengthen in order to be in this, would be my knowledge of that business end of things and budgets and those kinds of things. You know, I believe in looking critically at what we do have and what we are spending it on. I think that in addition to, you know, what we bring in from tax revenue, there is always grant money out there. I think the school should always be actively pursuing the kinds of grants that are available for student programming, for building improvements, whatever those would be. I think we need to be very good stewards of that money and accountable to our taxpayers. But that would be something I would be really looking forward to in getting more training from the PSBA trainings and all of those things to become more informed. Those are the things that I would look to my mentors on the board for guidance on. Yeah. I wouldn't see me rocking the boat too much in that area right away. I can say that.
Nice answer. Any other questions?
I have questions from Mr. Buckman and Ms. Moretti. I will wait until everyone here has had a chance to ask their questions.
We have.
I'll just say it was a good answer because I wanted to know how to answer that question.
One of, I have about four different questions. The first one is that if you are not appointed to fill this board vacancy, do you plan, intend to run for election next year? Why or why not?
Yes, I believe so, unless something that would happen that would deter me from doing so. But yes, currently, that is my trajectory. Yes.
I have a few other questions. How much time do you think is spent with board activity beyond the two meetings per month? So if you were going to take a guess, how much time do you think?
Yeah, I would imagine, I'm thinking at least several hours a week. I imagine that I have to serve on one or multiple committees. And depending on which committee, I would imagine two in the initial phase, because I do believe I have to complete training. So maybe a lot more maybe in the beginning phase. But I would imagine multiple hours per week, at least.
What committee do you feel you would be most effective on and why?
Well, obviously, you know, having been a teacher now for about 15 years, I think education would be probably where I'd be most comfortable. Very knowledgeable in curriculum development, professional development, strategic planning, just all those things. You know, I'm very much in it. You know, even though I'm at a cyber charter school, we are a public school, so I do follow all of those things. And my students take the PSSAs. So I'm very, very familiar with all of that. I would say also perhaps the technology, simply because as a cyber school teacher, very well-versed in education technology. We were Zooming about five years before the pandemic, so I'm very well-versed in all of that. And then finally, possibly safety as well, given my advocacy work outside of work.
One last question. How do you think the Board of Directors works with the administration? What do you think that relationship is like?
Well, I would hope that it would be very collaborative and supportive. I think it is a relationship that can get very tricky. I think people have a lot of opinions about, you know, the board being in charge of administration or administration being in charge of them. I would hope that is one that is very collaborative. I would hope that as board members, even though we are responsible for the hiring and hopefully retaining of our administration and staff, I believe that, you know, we are not the ones in the classroom, we are not the ones in the school building. So I would hope that we would listen and listen collaboratively with the administration. It would be a very collaborative partnership.
Thank you. Any board members with any final questions for Ms. Sarno?
No, but I have a statement. You do know this is not a paying job. People actually think we get paid for doing this.
Oh, no, I'm very well aware. Yeah.
Ms. Sarno, thank you so much for your interest in the Allegheny Valley School District. We're thankful that you gave us your time this evening, and we wish you all the best of luck.
See a lot of me for the next 13 years either way.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. And I apologize to the other applicants that I mean no disrespect that I will not be staying to listen to you, but I do need to go. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next candidate we have is Ms. Stacy Womack. Stacy did not join us this evening. So we will move on to the next candidate on the list, which is Mr. Andrew D. Parker. Andrew, you can raise it up or down if you need to. You have about two to three minutes. Give us a little bit of background why you feel you'd be an effective board member for the Allegheny Valley School District, and thank you so much for your interest. Thank you.
I'm Andrew Parker. I live at 409 Varied Avenue in Springdale. And I feel like I'm uniquely qualified for this position. I'm a father of three children, two of them whom are currently in Acmathonia, a second grader in pre-K. I am a coach for Lower Valley Little League, as well as a member at large of their board. And I have also been a special education teacher for almost the past 12 years. As a parent of children in the district and being around other children who are students in this district, one of the most, you know, paramount reasons why I'm interested in a board position is to make certain that my children and all children who live in this district are provided with the most robust and rigorous education that emphasizes academics and opportunities for enrichment, both inside and outside of the school. I also want to ensure that all children within this district, when they leave Acmathonia and head to the high school and leave the high school, to go on to whatever their post-secondary plan or education is, that they are prepared as learners with 21st century scales in order to be productive members of society and succeed in whatever that may be afterwards. As a parent and a community member, I also want to make sure that our schools are safe and secure and inclusive for all our children. And also, as a member of the community, I think it is important that all stakeholders are informed on district policies regarding education, how things operate, educational decisions, financial decisions, you know, transparency and integrity in all district levels are paramount. As a special education teacher, I currently work at Seneca Valley School District, Cranberry. I have critical insight really in how the public school system works, how it works top-down, but mostly on the instructional side. As a learning support teacher, I work with some of the most vulnerable students in the building, but I collaborate on all levels, multiple supports, related service providers, community services, and things like that to make sure that my children, especially the children on my base list, succeed at the highest level possible. I really do think that, you know, my experience in education, along with the multifaceted roles that I serve in that district, allow me, you know, to provide meaningful input, real-world experience, real-world knowledge, and bring something to the board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open this up to questions from the Board of Directors, and I'll finish things up with the questions that I asked the previous candidate.
Board?
So being a teacher at Seneca, have you ever felt an impact on a decision that the board out there has made? Do you remember a time?
On the individual level.
On the school, in your, dealing with what you do?
I would say probably one of the biggest board-level decisions that impacts us at the building level is certain budget-related things and resources that we can use in our classroom.
I'll ask the same question. You know, we need two meetings a month, and then we have additional things that we, we're all in committees. We have meetings. With your busy life with what you're involved in now, will you have the time to involve yourself in all the other meetings that we have?
Absolutely. This is something that's very important to me. You know, like I said, I have children in the district who will be going through the district. And I think getting involved is absolutely imperative to make sure that not only there, but all the other students in this district's education is delivered at the highest standard.
Thank you. Thanks for being willing to join us.
Mr. Parker, thank you for coming in, and especially thank you for dedication to our young people. My question to you would be, how do you see the line of communication as a board member and on education issues that come before us? Let me clarify that. If you had a question about something happening educationally here, all right, how would you approach it as a board member?
I think the first thing to do would give direct access to, you know, the teacher who would be implementing whatever it would be on like an inquiry basis, wouldn't it be possible? And I think, you know, speaking to the principal about it and, you know, just escalating it that way. I don't think that, you know, bringing something to a board that doesn't need to be brought to a board, whether it be misunderstanding, whether it be just requiring some clarification. But I'm definitely a firm believer in, you know, direct contact, you know, having conversations with people. I prefer the face-to-face because I think you don't misconstrue things as much as you would through an email or, you know, even over the phone. But I think that especially given the opportunity to be on the board, you have a different insight and a different perspective on how things work in the building level. And I think, you know, being visible and being present in that building level, being accessible to the teachers, being accessible to administration would help nip issues.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions of the board? Thank you for coming in today. Mr. Parker, we do have some questions.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, if you are not appointed to fill the board vacancy, do you plan, intend to run for election next year? Why or why not?
I absolutely do intend on running next year. I'm very interested in serving my community. I'm very interested in serving, you know, the members of this community and also, like I said, really safeguarding and making sure that not only my children's education, but all children's education is delivered with the most robust and rigorous and very applicable 21st century skills. I just want to make sure that everybody in this district who goes through this district is getting the absolute best quality education.
Thank you. I have a couple more. Let me hang up the phone. Okay. Are you willing to complete the new board director training?
Absolutely.
Are you familiar with it at all?
Not fully. I mean, I've looked a little bit online to see kind of what the process and how things would go. You know, I have a lot of experience with professional development. It's not something that's new to me. It's definitely something that I welcome. I feel like any additional resources that I can be given, any additional information, maybe a mentorship from a sitting member of the board would help ease that transition. Of course, there's going to be a learning curve because this is vastly different than sitting on a cloud of wood for a little league. But I'm definitely willing to complete any, you know, required trainings and any offered trainings as well to increase my knowledge on how things are done.
Thank you. What committee do you feel you would be most effective on and why?
First one that jumps out to me is probably education because I am a teacher. I've been a teacher for quite a few years, and it's something that's in my wheelhouse. It's something that I'm comfortable with. It's something that I feel like I have a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience, a lot of training. So it's something that I definitely feel would be a natural fit for me. Also, athletics and student activities are something that I'm passionate about. I think athletics really holds together the school. It gives everybody a chance to be excited. It, you know, electrifies the atmosphere when students are participating in things, you know, and not only athletics, but band, musicals, plays, clubs, you know, for that matter. I think when a student feels like they belong, you know, and they found their people, they're, it translates to better performance in the class, when you feel like you belong to a community, when you find your tribe.
Last question. How do you think the board works with the administration?
Collaboratively would probably be the easiest response to that. I think that I would hope that the board and the administration have completely open minds of communication, that the administration feels comfortable bringing things to the board, whether it be concerns, whether it be new materials that they want to, whether it be new clubs that they have teachers or students who are interested in starting. So I would like to think that the board has a very collaborative and open relationship, a very transparent relationship with the administration, credibility with the administration as well, that if something is brought to the board, that it will be given its due diligence, and it will be discussed, and it will be given the weight that it is, you know, desirable.
Any other questions from the Board of Directors? Mr. Parker, thank you so much for being here tonight. We truly appreciate your interest in your time. Thank you.
Parker, thanks for coming in.
Okay, let's move on with our list. Next, we have Ms. Colleen Crum.
I have decided not to do this. No, there are two great, amazing candidates that I cannot go up to that standard, so I'm going to slightly.
We are certainly glad you came here. Thank you so very much. It's nice to have you, and I'm sure that the candidates really appreciate hearing that from you.
Ms. Crum, thanks for your interest.
You know what? That upsets me because I think you'd probably be as good as anybody else sitting here. You shouldn't feel that way. But you're you, and they have their ideas, and you have your ideas, and they could do.
Maybe I'll run. Right now, I think we have two great candidates here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our final candidate. I'm going to attempt to pronounce your name. Please correct me. Is it Schmemer?
Sheimer.
Sheimer. Mr. James Schmemer?
Yeah, you got it.
Longy. Got it. Mr. Sheimer, come on up. You have about three to five minutes.
I'm not as fancy as these guys.
Fancy is not required. We appreciate you being here.
It's the moms that come to me and the dads that come to me and ask me to run because I'm somebody that will speak up for people that need spoken up. I have two daughters. I have a second grader in kindergarten. I got a little two-year-old. They go to this school, so I have skin in the game here. So I've been living here since 2014. I'm an exterminator for ECO Lab. I've been working there for 14 years. So I'm not familiar with all the school stuff like everyone else, but that's the stuff I'm going to learn. And people come to me with their problems, and I listen to what people have to say. I'm concerned about the young students, especially during the pandemic. I have a two-year-old that, you know, they had the mask on, virtual learning, and her mental state's like this bad. So we have to get her help. And I think having them masked on, really young kids, they can't communicate to one another. So that's something that needs looked into more so that don't happen again. And that's one of the biggest reasons was the pandemic. You have a stay-at-home mom, and she's, you know, got a little one taking care of him and another one running around trying to get this one. You know, it's tough. And I don't think the girl learned a whole lot during that time. When we were growing up, there was no crazy pandemic, and we turned out okay. So now the science is coming back saying, hey, we shouldn't put the masks on the kids. It's affecting our mental health and puts some years behind. So that's one of the things I want to look into is when something comes that we're addressing it correctly or compromising. If you want, you keep your kid at home, keep your kid at home. I mean, these kids are healthy, and they should be in school. That was a big one that I'd be running here. I was, you know, with the critical race theory, that kind of stuff, too. And we got to put the kids first and the parents. You know, the parents should decide what's going on for their kids. So I would like to hear feedback from the parents. Like, we could turn it over to the parents and say, they're the ones raising the kids, not me. You know, I have my kids raised. We all raise them differently. So maybe pulling the actual parents and the, you know, people paying the bills around here, you know, that would get a long way for me. So I put as much time as I can. I do work full-time. I'm a wife's a stay-at-home mom, so evenings are great. I'm open to listen. I'm really a good learner. I'll learn whatever I have to. I've done that my whole career. I haven't done all this school stuff, so, you know.
There are no specific requirements?
Yeah. I ran this right in, and I got a lot of votes, a lot of support in the community. And there's, hey, you got to run. And somebody took me in and advised to get in here and do it. So I'm a little bit different. I, once I know my stop, I will speak up for people that, you know, some people are quiet. They say, hey, go run. So yeah, that's what I do. That's all that's on my notes.
Great. Anyone from the board have questions?
I'll ask one. So a lot of times on a vote, you're voting, you don't always win your vote. You know, you have one opinion. As a board, we all try to, we all go to the same goal. We have different ideas on how to get there.
Yeah.
Would it upset you if you're voting one way or you believe in one way and the board votes a different way?
Now, we got to learn to compromise board members, the community, because we're so divided in this country. That's, both sides got to find a happy medium and decide on something like that. You know, there's going to be times where I'm not trying to get the vote. But as I speak to people, a lot of people, you know, have my viewpoints, and they're like, hey, you got to do. hey, you got to do this. We're not speaking up for some of these people.
So let me ask you this then, a follow-up on that then. Would you believe more in what you believe in or if a base of your whole community believes something other than that? Would you be more inclined to vote on a way the community wants you or the way you feel by?
Yeah, we're, well, we're elected by them. I should vote the way they vote.
I have a few questions. The first is if you are not appointed to fill this board vacancy, do you plan, intend to run for election next year? Why or why not?
Yes, that's, I've already thought through that. If they want me, they come to my door and say, hey, you got to run. They're cutting me down.
How much time do you think is spent with board activity beyond two meetings?
I'd say like a month, probably 10 hours, maybe more, maybe less. Depends on what's going on during the school year. Yeah, you're going to put more time in.
Are you willing to complete the new board director training?
Yeah.
And what committee do you feel you would be most effective on and why?
I'd say finance. I work for Corporate America. We have budgets. We have to meet and stuff too. So I'm good with numbers. I actually went to college for math, so I know all the financing stuff too. I just, you know, the path took me a different way in life, so I'm very good with numbers.
My last question. How do you think the board works with administration?
I think they work together, open communication between the two and working together to solve every problem.
Any final questions from the board?
James, one of the things that you put in your letter of introduction was that you want parents to make decisions. But as a board member, many of the things we vote on here, I sometimes would go against what a particular parent would want. Would you be able to accept that?
Yeah, you're not going to make everybody happy. That's unrealistic, but like I said, you represent the community. It's what they want collectively. I mean, there's going to be things you're going to say that they're not going to like, I mean, no matter what side you take, this is the world we're in now. Somebody's not happy with what you say.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your interest. We really appreciate your time. Thank you very much. So this concludes our interviews, questions and answers. The next part would be for our three final candidates to attend our voting meeting. During the superintendent's presentation is when the board of directors will nominate and then vote for the new candidate to fill the open seat. So at this time, I'm going to move ahead with our agenda. And before I turn things over to finance, if you do see any errors or inconsistencies in the minutes from the planning or from the voting meeting, please bring those to Folks, you are more than welcome to stay if you'd like. You're also, if you leave, we will not hold it against you either. So it's completely up to you.
Does that count for us?
It counts for everyone except for Sal. Sal has to stay.
See you guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to bills and payments. That is a placeholder for the voting meeting. And now under operations of finance, I will turn things over to the director of finance and business operations, Dr. Raj Kapal.
Before we get there, are there any audience comments on any of these agenda items? Hey, let's get to the finance.
Thank you, Dr. Grasek and Mr. Pollak. 7.1, earlier this evening, there was a finance committee meeting and most of the items relate to the 2324 budget. Next, there are two requests for the AIU's R-WAN that helps us with E-rate funding and also with TransPerfect Services that helps us with translation services for ESL students. If the board's okay with it, we'd like to sign those two. If not, I'd like to place it on the agenda. So please let me know by email. Next is interviews for the open board seat. That just happened. So moving on to 7.3, that's to appoint the new school director. That's a voting item for next Tuesday. 7.4 is to appoint a temporary chairperson, a president for the reorganization meeting in December. This is something we do annually. Do you want to do that tonight or next week to appoint the chairperson?
In the past, we have put the person's name to be nominated now and then added it to the agenda.
You should do it now because this is the next meeting we're going to be voting, right?
Right.
Yeah, let's do it now.
I'd like to recommend Ms. Pollak Moretti to serve as temporary chairperson.
Is that a motion? Then I'll second it.
That is a motion.
I'll second it.
It's seconded by Mr. Conti. Any question? Any other nominations? All is fazed by?
Aye.
Ms. Moretti will be our temporary chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Next is, the next couple of items relate to the...
You got a hands over.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but how much would I be required? I didn't hear Mrs. Moretti's response.
What we will do, Ms. Astagniac, is the board was in favor of adding it to the voting agenda.
So it's not directly...
It was just, it was a poll.
We don't have a quorum to act tonight on many of them.
Oh, that's right. So no need to do anything. We're going to add Ms. Moretti's name.
Somebody's virtual, like, spread. Is that a, if she, we could hear her. Oh, yeah. You're right.
Okay, so Mrs. Moretti's name will be added as the temporary chairperson for the voting meeting next week. Next is 7.5. That's an annual motion. It's to appoint representatives to be joint purchasing program and those representatives are Dr. Grasek and myself. Any questions with anything that we've discussed so far? No? Okay. Next is an extension of the consortium electric contract. Given the volatility with pricing, we are requesting all boards who are part of AIU's electric consortium to add this agenda item because of the volatility in the market. So we'd like to stay with direct energy and extend their contract. Next is 7.7. This is just an adjustment of the effective date of the lease termination with Wetsfield. And that was at the suggestion of a solicitor. It's been reviewed by him. So it'll take us through the 2324 school year playing at Wetsfield. 7.8, it's to place a donation bin at the high school for the paralyzed veterans clothing drive. Any questions relating to this? Okay, next is 7.9. It's for a furnace replacement for the greenhouse at the high school. We could not repair it. So please let me know if you've got any questions or you can also reach out to Mr. Zangrilli by email before the voting meeting.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is that, is the greenhouse in the same place it always been? Going up the hall, that little room?
Yeah.
What's it being used for?
Mr. Zangrilli?
They have plants that the students plant around the campus.
They're actually using it?
Yes, yes.
Because before it was just the teachers bringing in their stuff, putting it in for the winter and then taking it back out.
Yeah, there are the students that are in front of that place.
All right.
And again, it could not be repaired. So that's why the replacements on the agenda. Next, 7.10, that's an agreement with the staffing group and they provide cafeteria substitutes as well as custodian and support staff. And we need all support staff custodians right now. 7.11, it's updated bus routes. This is something we don't typically see, but because of bus driver shortages, contractors forced to update the bus routes and hence it's presented for your approval. 7.12 and 7.13 relate to alternative education program. Any questions? Please reach out by email. And then last but not least, it's the addition to the bus drivers list. Again, any questions? Please reach out prior to the voting meeting. And that's the finance report, Dr. Grasek.
Thank you, Dr. Raj Kapal. I do see that Mr. Polino has joined us. He is one of the candidates that submitted an interest in the board of director position. Want to ask the board how you'd like to proceed since we had people already share their interviews. I did not call Mr. Polino's name. I didn't see him. How would you like to proceed?
At the end of the meeting, when we get done with our regular agenda, I, we can interview Mr. Polino, but let's keep going forward with this agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Let's move on to education. Mrs. Griggle is joining us virtually and Ms. Bosco is not here. We have our coordination of, our coordinator of curriculum and instruction with us, Mrs. Vecchio. Ms. Vecchio, do you have an update report and do you have anything from the principals to share with us?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple quick notes. On the transportation note, we moved some high school students from one bus over to another bus and same stop, same time, just moved from one bus to another, just so you're aware. And in the afternoon, one bus is running a double route here at Akron. So they pick up their first run, come back and pick up the second run. It pushes the run back, the second run back about 10 minutes and parents have been notified. There were personally phone calls have been made on Friday, just so you're aware of that bus transportation.
What's the latest kids are getting home from that second run?
Akron County Elementary students moved back by 10 minutes and that route runs probably about a 25-minute run. So they're getting it home by, that last student should be dropped off around 3:35. Still reasonable amount of time. They're just called later instead of being called the first time out. Okay. The other topics we have to do this evening, just to make you aware, the state has released the PLOS scores and the district scores. We'll be talking about those next month and diving a little deeper into our data. And we are currently scheduled, I don't think it's changed, the induction, high school, National Society of Education induction is scheduled for tomorrow at the high school. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Heffner?
Question.
Yes.
Question.
Sure.
In one of the information you sent out to the board was a curriculum update that it was in binders.
I had said that, so I can, there was an email that I was asked why we don't make curriculum available electronically. Our curriculum right now are in three-ring binders. We don't have them in PDF form, which means we cannot give someone a link to it. We'd have to put those in PDF form, which wouldn't be a big deal. However, Mrs. Vecchio, in searching through the curriculum, realized that a lot of the curriculum needs updated. So we need to do an overhaul and then provide those links for the public. In the meantime, if someone would want to review curriculum, they can send one of the administrators an email and come in and look at it. It's too much to copy. You can't send it as an attachment. There are large quantities that are not on, that are not available electronically current. So we need to make some changes in terms of how that is stored and how we make it accessible to families.
What do you think would be a timeline to have it done electronically?
Well, getting it done electronically would maybe take a week or two depending on which content we're doing or we're putting on there. I really don't like the idea of putting something on there that's outdated, that's going to be updated over the summer, but we certainly, in a week or two, what would happen is those would have to be scanned, saved, and then a link. So it would be a matter of how long it would take to scan those documents. It's reasonable, say, two weeks, something like that, at least for...
Quantity binders. Probably don't look needed that, you don't have the highlights of schools.
So we'll start that initiative. Is that what we're looking at?
We have, we have to. Okay.
Yes, we have to do some updates to our curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heffner?
Yes. Good evening. I want to let everyone know the Veterans Day program will be back in person starting Friday, November 11th. That will be an in-person assembly starting at 9:15. And before that, we always have our Veterans Day breakfast and that's, will take place in the Rachel Carson Room around 8 o'clock. Our students and teachers have been working hard and having great music, readings, songs. And we do have a speaker, Mr. Green, Connor Green, who is a veteran, of course, and a social studies history teacher at the high school, will be speaking and making presentations regarding the veterans. I also wanted to, also there will be a YouTube link that will go out to the public to view and that will also be available for our primary school students as well as high school grades too. So grades three and nine will be in person and all the other grades can watch it via YouTube. Also wanted to let you know that last Thursday, our third grade team put together a fall festival for their families and students and I attended it. It was a great evening. They had fall festivities, refreshments, crafts, so on. And then they concluded the fall festival with a lantern walk around the campus. And it's just to celebrate the change of season and getting dark faster, change of season going in the winter. They sang songs and it was a great evening and I know the teachers got many emails about how they enjoyed that evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just get it. I just want to give you a little insight of where we are with our work with the IU, with the MAP, the MAP team and all using all the data. Our next meeting with them is Monday, the 14th, and we're working with the MAP department all day long, focusing on instructional strategies and increasing rigor. And I'm also here to speak for Mrs. Noel and Mr. Viskey, who are the girls Sartre and they won 2-0.
They won?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Pollak? Couple quick things. We are, we're in the last...
We are, we're trying to collaborate lately as a team to strike the comprehensive plan that we do in the spring. We have new additions to the website, the website launches to add a few services page to that to include some additional information, to keep parents, to make it transparent for parents to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then just a special plug to the special education high school position that's posted. We are still looking for a high school special education teacher with a focus in the area of math. So if you know anybody or if you are interested, please let us know.
Thanks, Dr. Haller.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Maybe we could get that man. Wasn't he special education?
He was at Red State though.
He's on.
He couldn't be on the board then.
Well, he would probably sooner teach.
That was gonna be one of my, that was gonna be one of my questions.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it, thank you. All right, let's, underneath education, there is one action item, and that is the student expulsion for the board to consider, 8.2. Under item 9, technology, Mr. Buckman is under the weather and Mrs. Griggle is joining us virtually. Mr. Main, would you kindly share some details about, Mr. Main is our IT supervisor. Mr. Main, would you kindly share a quick overview of the technology committee meeting that occurred?
Sure. We met a few weeks ago, technology committee. It was an informational meeting. We discussed some of the challenges that I have discovered since joining the Dynamo team and laid out some of the plans to correct some issues and to, you know, propel the district toward, you know, a much brighter future in terms of educational technology. I don't know how much detail you would like me to go into. We could be here for several hours.
That, that's fine, we, an overview is sufficient.
Of course, if anyone has any questions for me, please reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Main. If it's okay, I'll go through the, to the next, to personnel. Ms. Haas, do you have anything to share?
Gee, I just might. The district's experienced a lot of challenges trying to find, to fill positions. We need a biology, a special education teacher, and a high school math. We need custodians, cafeteria substitute workers. If anybody knows anybody, get in touch with somebody at the school, they'll be glad to interview them and give them a job. And this is, the employment is mostly what personnel is right now with.
Thanks, Ms. Haas. Are you okay if I take everyone through the items?
Yes.
Thank you. Under 10.2, we have a resignation. And that's to approve the resignation of Melissa Thomas Schaller. Under 10.3 is employment of supplemental staff. We have Anthony Martello for musical director and set designer, Bailey De Testa, musical producer, Elizabeth Bicking, musical orchestra director, Beth Minda for musical vocal piano director and musical rehearsal pianist, Emily Martello, musical choreographer, Bobby Martello, musical costume coordinator, and Sarah Patrick, musical art director. 10.4, we have the approval of independent volunteers, Laura Akers and Amy Sarno. And those are for classroom help and with some of our different groups. 10.5, the employment of winter sports personnel. We have two basketball positions for the board to consider at the voting meeting. Jared Knopf, JV basketball coach, and Michael Kramer, seventh grade basketball coach. Item 10.6, if you recall back over the summer with the retirement of Dr. Nuzzo, there was a shifting of responsibilities among our administrative team, particularly to Mrs. Vecchio, Dr. Haller, and Dr. Raj Kapal. In line with those changes, because they were significant, we have updated job descriptions for those three administrators. This is a first reading. If anyone has any questions or comments or changes, please email those to me so that those can be reflected for the next time we review these. Any questions about personnel? Let's move on to emergency management. Mrs. Moretti has lost her voice, she's not feeling well. She is listening this evening. Mr. Hevner, do you have anything you'd like to share under emergency management or anything that Mrs. Moretti might have shared?
One thing, Dr. Gracie, we do have a professional development day on Monday. And in the afternoon, the staff will have, will have a presentation for staff on threat assessments. Remember, we officially started threat assessments about a year ago in East Building. We got a speaker from the state here, Renetta, who knows our district very well and worked with us before. He'll be talking about the what, how, why, when, where, and the importance of threat assessments. So that'll be all afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00.
Thank you, Ms. Rappel.
Thank you.
Moving on to athletics and student activities, Mrs. Rinaldi, do you have anything to share?
No, you already know about the soccer game.
Thank you. We have 12.2, the spring musical, recommended action for the board to approve, Seussical as the spring musical. The performance dates are to be determined. Moving along to policy and legislative affairs, I will take the first part here, and if it's okay, I'll read through these. Mr. Pollock, you're the sole policy person that's with us today. Under Act 39 of 2018, schools may but are not required to test for lead levels annually in the drinking water of any facility where children attend school. If a school chooses not to test for lead levels, then the school must discuss lead issues in school facilities at a public meeting once a year. This meeting may be a standalone meeting or part of an existing public meeting such as a school board meeting. Last year, we did test for lead in the water. We did find levels of lead in some of the faucets. Those were marked not for drinking. And my question for the board is, would you like us to test for water, lead in water again this year? And it doesn't require a vote, it can be just a thumbs up.
Better be safe and sorry.
Okay, yes, thank you. Mr. Zangrilli will talk tomorrow, get that set up. Okay. We currently are in a policy review and their second reading. The policy committee meeting was postponed. Again, we have some school board members that weren't feeling well, and I believe those committee members also preferred Mrs. Stovniak running the meeting more than they wanted me to run the meeting. So that meeting has been postponed. We will reschedule that for the committee. I see Mrs. Stovniak up there smiling. Underneath policy review, there's a second reading on 13.2 for items 810 through 845. You will see where they're on the agenda, the item numbers for policy where there are no changes or minor changes. And then for numbers 818, 819, 822, 823, and 24, there are substantial changes underneath those policies, and two policies have been deleted. Policy 825, state mandate waivers, and policy 836, social media. It was replaced by policy number 816, and those are also attached in your board docs. Any questions about policy or any of the items we've discussed? Since we are approaching discussion items, I want to circle back. There were two items that I was remiss and did not share. The first item is that we are hosting what is called superintendent circles, where we have a topic of interest within the school district. The very first circle will occur on November, November 17th, that'll be in the evening. That is to share information and to have dialogue with any members of our families, of our students that would like to learn more about SCL in Allegheny Valley School District. That will be in person. The following circles will be held virtually so that folks that cannot come in or choose not to come in physically, or possibly it's simply easier to attend virtually, we will also have those virtually so that we can have some dialogue about various topics in the Allegheny Valley School District. The final update that I have is about our webpage. It is being updated tomorrow, which means you might not be able to access the page or there might be some glitches as we iron out transferring into our new website design. That will take place tomorrow. So we're looking forward to seeing that new webpage and hopefully everything goes as planned. At this time, we do have Mr. Polino here. Mr. Polino, thank you for joining us. Would you like to come on down front? Mr. Polino, what we've asked of the candidates is to talk to the board for about two to three minutes. We have two to three minutes, a little bit about why you feel you'd be an effective board member, and then we have some questions for you.
Okay. I apologize for being a little late today. I'm going out of town tomorrow. My hair's had a little bit of a pulling problem I had to take care of. So wearing a hat because I think last week was Halloween and I don't want to scare you guys with my hair and everybody. Anyhow, when I heard that there was going to be a vacancy, I, you know, one of the things that posed a challenge is getting somebody up to speed on the board. And obviously, being here over 20-some years on the board, I've pretty much been in all the different positions that we've had available. So coming out running, I think, is something that would be advantageous for the board to have, having an understanding of how things work. I know there's some changes probably since I, I left. But again, when I left, I really enjoyed the position as a board member here. I left because sometimes it's nice to get fresh blood in there, and that was one of the comments during the prior elections that people kept commenting on. And I said, well, if there's people that are gonna step up to the plate, that's fine. Again, you know, when you have a vacancy like that, I think having somebody that, you know, understands from the finance side of things, you know, been a board member when things have been good and when they've been bad. And we understand that there's a balance of the decisions that have to be made and they're not always simple decisions. And, you know, it'd be years of different challenge for the board members to have to deal with. And it's, you have to step back and take a look at it from all angles. Over the years, I feel I've done a pretty good job at that. And again, I've enjoyed my time on the board that I've had there. And I thought if, if there's a need here, we could definitely be available to help you fulfill that need. So any questions you guys have?
I have a couple. Mrs. Moretti and Mr. Buckman are unable to be here. They are listening online. I have a couple, but I've waited till the end. So I'll let the other board members ask questions if they have any.
Board members?
I have one. So, Nat, you bring a wealth of knowledge and experience here. Is there any certain reason that you want to come back? Is there any issues that maybe bring you back, or you're just, just here to help through a void?
No particular issues as far as, as that goes. Again, over the years, I've enjoyed being on board. I think it's something that our community members should do, experience. I always feel that I felt, you know, brought value to the table. Not always, it's not always going to be the way we go, but once we make a decision to go in the direction, you know, good debate is, is good to have. We don't always have the same opinions, but what I've found over the years is we're all trying to get to the same point. We have some different routes that we think we want to take, you know. But in general, you know, most people that are on the board are there for the right reason, to get us and improve the school district, to take us in a direction that's going to improve everything for the, not only the students, but the community as well. And expressing those opinions, you know, getting too argumentative or anything like that and moving ahead when, you know, sometimes you don't, it doesn't go your way, you just continue to move on and take it from where you're at. So really, it's the experiences I've had over time, I think, that it's helped, well, to, you know, helping out in the, in the system. There's no specific. Again, when I left, I left because it seemed like the community was saying that, you know, they wanted to see some fresh races on there. And again, that may be a choice you have or not, but I was always willing to, you know, help out any way we can with the community.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah, I know you're busy, so, and you know the time we put in. Do you have the spare time for all the extras besides the two meetings a month?
Oh, yeah. Again, you know, that's an issue of scheduling, more or less. The things I do now, I retired from, you know, the finance side of things, doing financial and, you know, that type of stuff. So, you know, I love spending time with grandchildren and everything, but I have my own business where we're working for the boys, you know, helping them with some of the grounds and managing some of the renovations and things like that. But I don't do the, as much of the work as I used to. So it's sort of more or less scheduling and getting people in the right position. So again, you know, I spent a lot of time merging the fire departments in there. That was consuming a lot of time, but we're, we're all merged now and it's, you know, running smoothly there. So not a lot of running around, we have. But the time, again, that's just the time management thing, I don't think it'll be a problem. I'm aware of the type of time you can spend, you know, just, but the requirements are enough. It's, good call from you, manager.
Thanks.
Mr. Polino, I have three or four questions for you. The first is, if you are not appointed to fill this board vacancy, do you plan, intend to run for election next year? Why or why not?
I really haven't thought about that a lot. I, I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, just how the community looks at things and where we're at, and it's worth understanding, you know, where things are at. But I probably would because I kind of enjoyed it a lot and, but at the same time, you know, most of the time when we have these runoffs, we can get a lot of interest of people stepping forward. I hope that's not a case in the future. But we really haven't made a decision. I figured right now, filling the vacancy that they have would be the first step, and then at that point, making the decision as we go forward.
Thank you. I have a couple on my phone. Are you willing to complete the new director training?
Sure.
What committee do you feel you would be most effective on and why?
A background has been in technology and finance. Those are areas that I've always worked well in, in the, in the past as far as my career path and things like that. So I've had experience in a variety of different areas. So obviously, I think those, those areas are probably the stronger areas that I understand a little better, more about. But again, over those years, I think I learned a lot of knowledge in different areas and many committees.
Super. Last question. How do you think the board works with administration?
The current board, as far as that, I couldn't say. But in, in the past, in my perspect, perception of how that is, I think it's been a pretty good working relationship. Again, there's always differences in opinions and things like that, a challenge. But I think we're, we're all, like I said, trying to achieve the same thing, you know, we're all going in the same direction. Just have different ideas and different paths we take to get there. But I've never had an issue, you know, with administration and things like that. I think it's pretty, pretty open and straightforward as far as my opinions and things like that. And I wear, wear them on my sleeve, I let people know where I'm at. So I think that's a good thing.
Can I have one question?
Yes.
What do you see as the biggest issue facing a school district today and in the future?
Well, again, in the educational process and, you know, the directions that we're going, I think that bringing the community... we're going, I think that, um, the, bringing the community back around to support what they're doing. I mean, again, I don't know what's, I, I try to stay away from the operations here because I don't wanna, didn't want to come back and make people feel intimidated or anything. But the perception I had, um, when I left was that, um, we weren't in sync with the community and, and listening to the community and things like that. A lot of that is, you know, and I understand the positions we were in at those times. There was tough decisions that we had to make. And, um, can't always, you know, educate everybody, uh, all the time on why we're making those decisions. It's, it's a tough thing to do. So, um, you know, getting the community to support what we're doing in all aspects is, and that communication, open communication area is always, I think, a big challenge for any of the school districts, I think, that are out there because there's, it's a changing world.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, we gotta listen as well as, you know, take action. So it's not always, you know, my side that's, that we need to listen to is those that oppose what you're considering doing as well and trying to understand what their views are and why they're, they're looking at it. And then, again, it's into, you know, a lot of debate. And we have to make those tough decisions on which way to go.
Nate, thanks for coming in. You know, we certainly, uh, understand your years of dedication to this school district. Uh, you've been here for, uh, changes, hard decisions, and, uh, the peaks and the valleys. Again, thanks for coming tonight.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. We appreciate your time. Well, the other candidates, what we shared with them is at the voting meeting, that's where the board of directors will make their nomination, vote for the candidate. You are more than welcome to stay. If you have other things to do this evening, no one will hold it against you if you just like. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will turn things back over to our president, Mr. Pollak.
Uh, discussion items. Uh, anyone on the board? In the audience. All right. I see a lot of hands jumping up. Uh, good. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Kelly Lee, the mortgage strategist for the college. I just wanted to say that the Veterans Day program is always really, really nice. So I was disappointed that it won't be open to the public. Um, I appreciate that it's been dreamed, but I, I'm here to be the same so next year.
Yeah. Our, um, the reason behind it is that, um, the veterans that have responded are, um, getting up there in age. And, um, we wanted them to feel comfortable in our larger group. Our intention is to keep inviting the public. Mr. Lviski also wants to invite more of the students. Um, so it is, it is about their comfort and them being comfortable. We're honoring them. And we didn't want them potentially to be overwhelmed by a lot of people. And it does seem like right now people are getting sick with different crud that's going around. So that's the reason behind it. We do plan on opening it up.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Administration, you can stop.